Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who are assigned in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate any immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. The first card is Stephanie Butler, who would like to come to speak to the board about Crystal Paulson would like to come to speak to the board about special ed.
Good evening. I wanted to come up here and tell you the transitioning with my son to Nolan kindergarten has honestly, I thought it was going to be a lot rougher than what it was. Surprisingly, everyone from Mike, Lynn, the board members, the principal, the teacher, the coordinators, everybody has worked as a team with my son. And I know some people asked or questioned my credibility because I said I would never enroll my son into Dearborn. But when I brought, needed Mike's help, every single one of you knew what you were signing up for because if my son got hurt, it was going to be you guys who I went to. Special needs director, superintendent. Every single one knew the chance and liability of doing this. So you guys have supported me. You guys have listened to my suggestions with the training. Every time I walk in, I get positive feedback from the parapoles. I'm seeing them work together as a team. And we had a successful meeting on Thursday with so many parents asking questions. And I'm very optimistic for the school year specifically with the ASC because I feel that we are right where we need to be, that the kids are going to start improving. And I'm glad to be a part of that because a lot of people don't know that I actually worked behind the scenes. And I did it with not even knowing that I was going to put my son in your guys' hands. But as an advocate, I wanted to better my community even though the chances of, I didn't think that he was going to be here, but here we are. And I'm proud to literally work over a year to push this, to push you guys to do what was best for the ASC students and the special needs. Because as parents, we're allowed to suggest, we're allowed to advocate because at the end of the day, we're the parents. So thank you guys for everything, and I appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to working with every single one of you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next employee, James Maddenan, would like to come to speak to the board about the state of the music department.
Good evening. It's always a pleasure to come here and speak to the board. It's very nice to see you. And now, while I generally prefer to be a positive person, I've spent all summer really looking forward to coming back and getting into a new school year. However, I am here tonight to talk about some things that have gone from being concerns to being worries. I have been speaking to my colleagues, my fellow music teachers, and the common feelings are those of discomfort, disrespect, and confusion. Massive changes to scheduling, building assignments, the early release schedule with the new contract, very little time before the school year began. And our staff is trying to build the plane while we fly it. And while we're doing this, there are currently seven vacant positions in elementary music. There were six before another colleague, another veteran teacher resigned last week. We're losing teachers. And from talking to my colleagues, I know that many of them are currently looking for other jobs. Considering what we were able to win in the new contract that benefited teachers, that says a lot about the current working conditions. I have doubts that the district will be able to fill all seven vacancies, especially when a predominance of these positions are multi-building assignments where the teacher is expected to switch schools at the semester. And to be blunt, if I didn't work here, that's not a job I would apply for. And if that means we're looking at a long-term solution of having substitutes in the building covering that, not able to teach music to the students, that's a disservice to them. And I really hope that we are listening to the teachers and that when we are coming with solutions, to try and do something that works for teachers and that puts the students first, that we are being heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, Kathy Martin would like to come to speak to the board about the start of the school year.
Good evening. I would like to echo what Dr. Maleko said earlier today. I feel like the school year got off to a great start considering how it could have started. We did a really good job, I feel, working together through some of the construction and some of the issues that were happening prior to the first day. And I think things went smoother than people had anticipated. So I was really happy to see that. We had our executive board meeting tonight, and everyone agrees. And I also want to talk about, again, the contract. The contract's not going to be old news because our goal with this contract was to solve problems. And one of the problems was having staff, having teachers. And since this contract has been in place, I've gotten several calls from people who were actually waiting to accept positions in other districts and opted not to because this contract was something worth them staying for. I've gotten calls from people who work in other districts who are excited to possibly come here because of the contract. So I was really happy that we were able to work together and come up with at least a solution where we could retain teachers better than we had been. Now, some of the stuff in the new contract is also causing some issues, but we are working through those. And I look forward to continued open dialogue and continued problem solving to, again, keep this the best district in the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, community member, Mary Elaine from Dearborn, would like to come to speak to the board about abuse or neglect.
Hello, board members, and hello, audience watching beyond. I'll speak just briefly. I have two topics, and I'd like to take the opportunity to educate people. Michigan has a child abuse and neglect law. So I want to mention that because keeping a community safe is everyone's responsibility. And I say that because everyone, particularly educators, have an obligation, legal as well as an ethical obligation, to report abuse or neglect. And as a community, we all have an obligation to take care of people in our community, our community generally. That includes people, particularly hospital and educators, that includes board members, whether or not you're on the board. Just because something happened a while ago doesn't mean you don't have obligations. You have obligations to report. And I think that's part of our humanity. We need to respect that. We need to be aware of that. So I want to mention that to people. But mostly, I want to address that there was an allegation, it's apparently someone posted something that I was made aware of, that board members overlooked or covered up or other people in the district, some allegations many years ago. I want to categorically deny that. I've met many times in private meetings and in public meetings with many of you. As a past board member, I would absolutely never condone any kind of cover-up of abuse or neglect. As a social worker, I would never do that. I know that most of our educators, almost every person in this district, would report anything like that. There are no categories of protected ones in our district. I met many times with many of you until late evenings, and I never heard board members trying to protect other people. We are lucky because we're a large and well-endowed district. We have many great people. We have so many resources. So we can consult legal counsel. And as a past president, I did that on many occasions. And any person who sat in the chair was able to do that and should do that. So I want to say that this district would absolutely never do that. I could never see that happening. I would never do that. And it's not happened while I've been on duty, not that I am aware of. I want to ask everybody in our community to be thoughtful and considerate of other people. Dr. Maleko just quoted past Superintendent Hughes to be kind. The past rhetoric that has inflamed people is destructive. So let's be better than that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, Amy Scholus would like to come to speak to the board about clarifying misinformation.
That was pretty good. Scholus, that's the closest it's come to someone who didn't know how to pronounce it. So thank you. Good evening. My name is Amy Scholus, formerly Blackburn. I served on this board for 15 years with integrity and honor. And I left with dignity, knowing that I did a job, and I did the best job that I could do during even the worst situations. I won't give a history lesson because many of you know me, and I'm short on time. You might be wondering what might be bringing an old relic like myself here today. Well, I'm here because an attack was launched and the noise was heard all the way to maybe Michigan. While I may not be the intended target, the damage has been done, and I felt compelled to set the record straight. I cannot sit by and be accused of allowing a pedophile to walk the halls of one of our schools while I was president of the board. Not to mention, my son was in that building and in that teacher's classroom. The characterization of the situation, how the situation was handled was nothing less than political theater. While I cannot go into the details of the case, I assure you that it was handled appropriately. The fact that the case went unnoticed for almost 10 years should tell you that the administrator and the HR director did a thorough job of documenting the case, and it went unchallenged by the teacher. With regard to the teacher being protected, this is an accurate statement that was taken out of context. This particular teacher had friends in high places. However, despite that, the administrator did not allow that to deter her from pushing forward with the full support of the HR director. In fact, she did it at risk of her own career because she did put her own potential future on the line by pushing this and pursuing it. But she knew it was the right thing. The fact that no criminal charges were brought forward speaks to the dramatization of the accusations. And I am not by any means diminishing what this particular teacher did. It was egregious. It deserved punishment, and that punishment was delivered. Remember, when you attend a play or a performance, the directors use spotlights to distract the audience. This allows them time to rearrange the set, to bring in new actors and new players. A lot goes on in the shadows when you're focused on what's in the spotlight. What we say is important. It matters. Our children are watching, and they're looking to us to know how to treat other people and how to act. Telling part of a story is no different than making up a story. Now more than ever, we need to get politics out of our schools. What's going on in Dearborn is so amazing, and I personally didn't fully appreciate it until I went to another district.
Thank you very much.
Stephanie Butler would like to come to speak to the board about the military renewal.
Hello, board. I no longer wish to speak about the military renewal. After hearing the speech about conduct and behavior and political atmosphere and theater and all this stuff, while you sit up there and you lecture us, you forget to ask yourselves why you lost the trust of the parents of Dearborn. Was it because out of 60-something books that were put forward to be removed, only four books were taken off the shelves? What you did then was you told the parents, they have no authority over their own child's education, over what they take in, what they don't take in. Sit down, shut up, and fall in line. That's what you did to the parents. Did you forget about the times you made us walk through metal detectors like we were common criminals on our dime? And that the women were not allowed to even carry their purses into a public meeting as if we had ever incited violence? It makes me sick to have heard all that crap. And then to hear about this teacher and the sex scandal, whatever he did, he got fired, he got removed. He did not get the discipline that was deserved because he went on and he is currently teaching at an all-Islamic school in Fishers, Indiana, where he could possibly harm another child. I'm so sick of the cover-ups here. You guys talk about how you investigate things right off the bat. Let me ask you this, is the parapole that ripped the little special ed child by his hair into the back of Whitmore Bowls, she's still employed today? What further evidence did this board need besides a picture of the actual act itself? She's still employed. So before you throw stones, make sure you don't live in glass houses, friends.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Is there any board follow-up?
The one thing that I would bring up, that was mentioned earlier, was about the music department. We talked a little bit about this at the last board meeting. So Dr. Maleko, is the administration working with the special subjects on how the scheduling's going to go with the new early release?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought this up because I was going to comment. And I do want to comment with Kathy Martin, I do appreciate, because we are working through these things. The reality is, is with the new block schedule and early release, we're going to have growing pains. So administration, we've talked about it, we've changed the structure of the special area at elementary. So you're going to have some things that you need to deal with as you make the change. We're committed to the music program. And just to refresh everyone, I mean, we committed extra staffing at the middle school to promote it, but we committed to no reductions at the elementary. Of course, we do have to find appropriate staffing to have staff for those music classes. And we will continue to work, I know, as we transition with Ms. Martin and DFT Union to make sure that we're on the same page. And again, there's going to be some issues when you make major changes. But ultimately, all of this is for the betterment of the students with the early release to help student achievement. And then with the music. And that's why I'm on that committee, leading the process to ensure that we continue to promote the music, the arts. So there will be some things we need to go through, but we continue to work together. I know Mr. Martin's involved. And we'll continue that dialogue with HR. And every time we have a transition into a new schedule, just like we have to do now with contract language, but then we delayed the early release until October 10th. So there were some things that we need to work through. And I know HR is working through those with the DFT to make sure that they run smoothly.
All right. Trustee Pelazkov.
Dr. Maleko, I can appreciate that because of the changes in the contract, we're having some growing pains. And we anticipated that, especially with the early release from the late start shift. But I do have concerns when we continue to hear about the specials programs and being able to acclimate to that new scheduling. It may take time, but do we have that kind of time? Can we afford that kind of time where students are going to be missing out? If we're not able to hire within the first six months of the school year, to what extent are these students now going to miss an opportunity? And I hope that we're looking at this with some urgency as to how to not, in the interim of shifting to the new scheduling, that we don't lose a good portion of the programs themselves due to lack of staffing. It would seem that, you know, you're kind of, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater while we try to figure this out. And I hope that we can come up with something, even in the interim, that would still be sufficient for, at the elementary level, it sounds like is where the biggest problem is, to address these losses.
And I think when you make changes, I'm going to ask Mr. Martin to come up, I think he was getting ready because he's dealing with it directly. You know, as you make changes too, we have multiple special areas. So there are differing things that occur when you're looking at prep time and other things to promote certain programs. And we only have so much time of the day. But Mr. Martin, I know we have a plan, we're in transition, and we expected that when we restructured the elementary schedule.
Yeah, and the goal was to honor the current placements that we had from last year. I would say the other goal was how do we maximize the resource in the FTEs across the elementary to ensure equitable access of opportunities for all students? But also, to Kathy's point, how do we improve what we're doing to ensure recruitment and retention? So for our specials area teachers, one thing that we heard was they weren't getting their prep periods. They were often traveling between buildings during the same day. So we were able to build a model that allows them to have a prep period every day. They may travel from a building from day to day, but they are at that building all day long, which is a more efficient use of resources. And at the same time, all of our elementary students are all receiving the same specials experiences structurally. And our K-5 teachers are all getting prep periods, and most of them are getting common prep periods. We've talked before, or last time I was here, we shared about early release and the goal of creating time for collaboration and time for teacher teams to work together. And this model is built to do that. But to Dr. Maleko's point, it isn't perfect. We have some bumps that we're working through. I can tell you, we did meet with the instrumental music teachers, James is one of them, and are working through how best to use our resources to support instrumental music. We do have vacancies in music. We also have vacancies across the district as well in other places. So I know I spoke with Mr. Taylor today. There were two or three recommendations that he put forth to hire people for those positions. In terms of PE, art, STEAM, and media, those are staffed and staffed well. But again, the model is different. It will improve as we grow and we learn, but the intent of it was to better utilize the resources that we had.
And just with the vacancies across the district, I know we're probably in a better shape overall, right? Because that's what I'm hearing, I'm talking to the prince, even though we have some, when you look at the overall numbers, and I don't know, Mason, if you want to comment on that, that we're in better shape as we've been dealing with this teacher shortage.
Good evening. Yes, definitely in better shape than the last two years at the start of the school year. This is just an estimate, but the last two years, we started the year with about 50 vacancies, 55. And currently, we're at about 30. I was wanting to do the percentage before I came up. So 30 vacancies with nearly 1,500 out of 1,500.
And understand that other districts are facing the same situation.
Absolutely. We're in contact. All the HR departments in all the districts collaborate regularly, and everyone's having the same challenges. I also want to say is that a lot of, in addition to this major change with the schedule, Lisa Meyer, I shouldn't say her name, but it's positive though, the former resource teacher leader, had a wealth of institutional knowledge that is now being learned by the people we're blessed to have that have stepped up. And so that's also a little different, is that we're learning, that we have different people doing different roles that are also learning how the staffing and the hiring and all that goes.
Can I just add too that the associations are aware of MASB, MASE, and that's why they've been advocating for even more leniency with, for example, bringing retirees back so they can retire and come back and get hired because this is a state problem. And the long term is grow your own, and we do have now money that's allocated from the state. But that will come into play after several years when people are certified. Right now, you know, there's some immediate needs that are occurring across the state and some of those things that we're doing. But I do feel comfortable, and I agree with Ms. Martin, that this contract is definitely going to help attract people to our district as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And I wanted to say that we hired two music teachers when we didn't have vacancies last year in the spring to prevent any vacancies when we started school. Things do change over the summer, though, especially in the market we're in.
I just have this one more thing too. We can expect, and I'm just putting it out there, I talked to our administrators, when we start that October 10th, just expect, we are doing our best to get ready. But again, that will be a transition. And so administrators know that everyone has to be flexible. We'll get through it, but you know, we're going to have things operating, but as we go through the year, we're going to be better in a month, and better in three months with the new process that we're unveiling. But ultimately, it's going to help students overall, and that's why we negotiated in the contract. But it is a change, and people have to go through change, and we're going to go through those growing pains. But we have plans in place to try to soften that impact for everyone.
Trustee Barry.
Yes. Crystal, you mentioned that you were surprised, everything was going so well for your son. Why would you be surprised? That's a perfect example of a parent advocating for their child, working with the administration. It's all about communication, communication, communication. And who benefits? Obviously, the student. President Thorpe, as a Spartan, you should be very proud of the decisions made over the weekend at Lansing. I'm very proud. I'm very proud of my good friend Brian Masalem too. And the decisions he made a few years ago ended up costing politically. I remember, he was on national TV. I remember his exact words, "Never again at MSU." So even though my whole family went to U of M, I might be going out shopping for a green hat sometime next couple days. I'll leave it at that.
Trustee Pelazkov.
Just to back up, because a couple of things were said, and I'm just going to respond to the teacher's position of, it appears to be somewhat of a morale issue of the way the scheduling's working. I just want to be sure that we are communicating with those who are being negatively impacted at this time to reinforce that while this is a transition place that we are in, that we're not so focused on our efficiencies and the best use of our resources, that we lose the human factor of hearing what it is that is most troubling for them that they're struggling with. And maybe finding a way to accommodate that while also honoring the contract changes that are there. And I'm hoping that everybody can get together and find that solution. It might not be tomorrow, but I'm hoping that it's before the end of the school year and we don't have students losing out on an entire year of opportunity.
Thank you. The other one that I wanted to bring up, Dr. Maleko, was a few of the comments today were in regards to staff and accusations, some proved, of misconduct. When there is an accusation, what is the process that the district goes through?
So it depends on the level, obviously, the accusation, depending on the serious nature of what it may be. But we, again, I had mentioned in my statement to report to supervisor, we will start an investigation. Again, it could be a performance issue. It could be something, maybe it could be misconduct. We have a document on our website that's aligned with state and federal law that talks about the process we implement. The first thing is we protect students. So if it seems to be a serio-- and again, an accusation is an accusation when someone brings it forward. We also need evidence to support that when we investigate. So, you know, if-- So, you know, if someone heard a rumor or second or third-hand information, that might point us in to start investigating, but then we need specific statements. We need to talk to people. We need, you know, whether it's emails, whatever other information that might support whatever it is. And again, because, you know, a lot of times, there are accusations that we've had to address, and these employees are no longer with us, but there's others that are not and turn out not to be accurate. And so we also have an obligation for due process rights for our employees under state and federal law. Now, the first thing, though, is protecting students is the primary concern. So what we will do is, and I kind of mentioned it, and we presented on this before the board as well, is we'll put an employee on administrative leave pending the accusation. Again, it depends on the serious nature. When we put an employee on administrative leave, I can almost assure you that we definitely contact with legal counsel. That does not mean that the employee is guilty of what the accusation is. That just means that we want to protect the situation, protect the students, and immediately remove someone from the situation. Then we go through investigation and due process. You know, if they're part of a union, they have the rights to representation. It's the United States. It's state and federal law. It's board policy. And we will investigate, and we try to do that in a fair manner. It'll go into our human resources department. I'm not directly involved in the investigation, but I will be apprised of it. I will often be in conversations with the human resources executive director, other directors, and our legal counsel to determine what course of action. We will not rush it, and so I know sometimes that's a concern for the employees, too, is that it's given that someone did something. Well, it's not. It's putting them on by law. People say, "Well, why pay?" By law, you have to, you cannot remove their income until you go through due process. We, you know, when it comes, teachers are under different rules than, for example, non-instructional. Teachers are tenured. I've dealt with tenure cases in this district. We have to go through a process that we implement to make sure that we're following the laws so things are done properly. And again, it could be performance. It doesn't mean misconduct. Sometimes it could be misconduct. Misconduct is something that might harm a student, then that's when we would immediately implement administrative leave. But there's a whole process that we go through. We have to protect everyone involved, but I will say that we do need evidence to support accusations, and that's why I was trying to say on social media, just because someone threw something out there, doesn't mean it's true. If some, the topics that were coming up here, I have not received any, I sat here at the May board meeting, I had our legal counsel, and I said, "If anyone has information, report it now." I had our compliance officer stand up. It's posted on our website. Please report this stuff. We are, as educators, myself and others, and I've had to do it as a principal, we are mandatory reporters by state law. And I've dealt with these situations, again, as a principal, and I had helped facilitate them with our social workers when we have to report potential child abuse. And so these are very serious matters that we take seriously. Ultimately, we're here to protect students, to protect staff, and to protect the rights of all, but we also will not stand for people's names, slanders, comments, or defamation based on baseless, that are not based in fact. And that's what an investigation will determine. That's what will happen when we get these very detailed reports when an accusation is made. So I would say if someone feels there's been some sort of misconduct or a performance issue, bring it forward, but it needs to be truthful, it needs to be honest, and it needs to be provided with information that supports those claims, and we will be very fair. And that has been my track record in the district, between the time I've been a principal to the human resources executive director and now superintendent. Thank you.
Next item, please. Oh, sorry. Trustee Moser.
I have a question, and this might not be for all of us, maybe for legal counsel. If an incident happened in our district way before all of us are on board, or some of us came on board, how do we go about requesting that kind of information?
To get more of the background so you're able to...
Or reports that board members at the time received.
Dr. Maleko, how would trustees get the information from previous events?
Previous events of student discipline?
Student discipline.
Or staff.
Staff misconduct.
We would talk to legal, and we would get back to you on that.
Yeah, that's only a question. I think legal will be able to answer it.
And I'd like to remind everybody, most of those are done during closed sessions, so a lot of time, a lot of, that wouldn't be, you know, available publicly or foible or anything, because a lot of the conversations, when it gets to that level, the staff member requests a closed session in order to meet with us. That information should never be made available publicly.
Yeah, the closed session minutes must be by state law, but discipline documents and other things we can look into that are not part of a closed session.